Good evening, welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for September 9th, 2014. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could I get a roll call, please?
Carolyn Smart, present.
Colin McNamara, present.
And I'd like to announce that this meeting is being tape-recorded. Chairman's additions or deletions. Andy, I just have one question. I had given you that article.
Yes.
Do I need to put that on as a separate item?
Uh, no.
Or can we talk about it with the -- okay.
Yeah, we can talk about it within 3.4.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we switched things around a little bit because we were getting folks that were saying, "Oh, I never stay up for the whole thing and you make announcements and I don't hear it sometimes." So we thought putting some of the announcements in our updates at the beginning of the meeting, get that out of the way is a good thing.
That makes sense.
So Board of Selectmen announcements, updates, and reports, do we have any?
Looks like he has an announcement here. For the National POW MIA Recognition Day, can you speak? Will be observed on Friday, September 19th. For the Townsend VFW Post 6538 in auxiliary and will conduct a candlelight POW MIA ceremony on the Townsend Common that evening, beginning at 6:30 PM, and the public is encouraged Oh, another -- the Water Department actually asked me to bring up -- I don't know if folks are receiving an envelope at home with little water bottle in there asking for a sample. That's not coming from the Water Department. It's probably an independent company trying to sell filters, but we've had a lot of people ask if it's us, and it's not, so.
They did that a few years ago. I remember getting something like that.
Yeah, and a lot of folks thought maybe it was the town asking for a water sample to test their water, and it's not, so. And that's it.
I just want to let my board know, there are a few meetings that MMA is having coming up. I'm going to be going to several of them. There's a Selectmen's Meeting on the 18th in Boston, 18th of September. There's a Legislative Breakfast that I don't know if either one of you -- I know Carolyn, you've gone to a couple of them before. This one's in Sterling on October 17th.
What day of the week is that?
That's a Friday.
I can't do that every week.
And then there's a Fall Conference. It's down in Franklin on October 25th, that's a Saturday, and they actually have different work sessions, too.
Yeah, we went last year.
Did you go to that one?
Yeah, all non-members can go, it's only $60.
Oh, no, this is the Selectmen's one, though.
The Selectmen's one?
Yeah.
It's in Franklin, so it must be the weekend after the Finance Committee.
Probably, yeah. This is the Selectmen's one, so I didn't know if either--
You said the 25th?
25th of October.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll look into it to see if I have my schedule.
And Andy, I do plan on going to the conference in Boston in January, too, so.
I most likely will go to that, too. Since you brought that up, I'm in a class. I know Colin, you had mentioned about possibly moving the meetings till 6:00. We wanted to talk about that, but I was hoping we could do that starting in November because DOR put out a five-week class that I'm enrolled in, starting September 30th, and it's every Tuesday.
Okay.
So it's in North Grafton, so I won't be getting back till probably 5:30, 6 o'clock, so I didn't know.
So you want to start doing the 6 o'clock in November?
That would be great. The last Tuesday's the end of October.
Yeah, that's fine.
Does that work okay, Andy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just thought that--
Is everybody on board with meeting and--
Yeah, I'm fine. I mean, I can arrange it. My, you know, my family--
Especially with the winter, it's kind of nice not to get home so late on the icy roads.
Right.
Oh, God, ice again. I'm not ready for it.
My mind shuts off at about 9:00.
I'm not ready for my flowers to die yet. I can't even go there. Andy, did you have anything? Town Administrator Updates and Reports.
Just a couple of quick things, Sue. We talked in the past about a earmark for Townsend that was included in the state budget, and I'd been unable to find the disposition of that, and it had looked like it got vetoed by the governor. However, I talked to Representative Harrington last week. She told me that it was approved, and I was able to find it in the budget last week. So the $50,000 for Public Safety Improvements did make it through. It was vetoed by the governor and then overridden by the legislature. So we'll be getting that. Plan with that all along has been to pay for the new pumps at the Highway Department and pay for one new message board or put towards maybe two used message boards.
This is for public safety or for--
For public safety is how it was classified in the state budget.
Okay.
You got that email for that first read where you had originally vetoed it?
Yeah.
That's all I could find, so I dumped it off.
Yeah, I found the final budget shortly after you sent me that email.
It was hidden under the Department of Public Safety, that's why. It was hard to find.
So we're using it for highway, but that's still considered public safety?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll make sure before we go and expend the money, we'll make sure that that's going to be reimbursable, but--
I think it was outlined, wasn't it, Andy, what it was expended for?
It only said, "It said for public safety purposes. Spent it for the town of Townsend for public safety improvements." But we'll confirm and make sure that we're okay on that. The Pipeline Coalition continues to meet at a meeting yesterday. Had a long presentation by Ken Ekloff, who's local resident of Groton, who's had a long career in the energy business, so he's got a lot of inside knowledge of how energy projects work, so he gave us some background on that. The Coalition is working on a, what's being called the Municipal Rights Letter that will be sent out to basically everybody that we think we could send it to that would have some beneficial impact, so politicians primarily, politicians and regulators. So Coalition is working on that. There's also been some contact with State Senator Donahue about a hearing at the Utilities and Energy Committee on the Hill and also with Representative Harrington, who's on the Post Audit and Oversight Committee. And that committee has a pretty broad scope, pretty broad reach, so they can kind of get into anything they want to get into, so we may -- we're going to be talking to her and seeing if that committee can hold a hearing and give us another opportunity to get the word out and get our concerns out there. And then the governor has committed recently to conducting what's called a low-demand study, and that essentially is, would the pipeline be needed if demand ends up being less than what has been projected so far? One study primarily that Kinder Morgan is relying on in their project, and that is a high demand, that's projecting high demand in the future, that gas and coal, I mean, oil and coal-fired plants will go away, there'll be increased exports, things like that, so there would be more demand than there currently is. A lot of people are calling that into question and asking whether that's really viable. So the other end of the spectrum would be the low demand, and so there's going to be a study commissioned by the Department of Energy Resources to look at that as well. So we're going to keep an eye on that.
I'm trying to remember, what was the timeline for Kinder Morgan doing their filing, the initial filing?
They're going to do what's called a pre-filing or a pre-application. They've all along said that that would be middle of September. That is, I suppose if you look at the local permitting process, it would be like going in an informal meeting with the Planning Board to talk about a subdivision, just to get a little bit of feedback, flag some, you know, find out where some of the issues might be.
But that's when we would know that they're really serious about going forward with it.
Yeah, it would give us a, reinforce our assumptions that they're serious. And then I believe it's not sooner than seven months after they file, after they do the pre-filing, they could file their formal application. So that puts them into April or May next year, which is what they've been talking about. And then at that point, any group or any individual or any community could file to become an intervenor and have status, have a seat at the table, opportunity to comment. There'd be opportunity through the FERC process, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, also through the National Environmental Policy Act process, permitting process, they'd be filing an environmental impact statement at least, maybe, depending on what the impacts would be, it could trigger up to a more detailed filing, so. So once they make the formal file, then there would be more opportunities for us to be heard and for other communities and residents to be heard.
And the next meeting is two weeks?
Two weeks, yep.
Do you know where?
And it's in Pepperell.
Okay.
Yeah, so kind of alternating between close by and not so close by. Yesterday, we were up in Andover, so our next meeting will be a little bit closer.
Where is it?
Pepperell. And then the School Building Committee, and Sue, you're following this as a member of the Building Committee. Building Project is moving ahead through the permitting process and the design process. Now they're currently before the Board of Appeals, and then they'll be going to the Planning Board for site plan review, so still on target. The schedule hasn't changed, and just trying to get all their ducks in a row so that they'll be ready to go out to bid next year and break ground later in the year. Keep our fingers crossed, so. That's all I got.
Thank you. All set? 1.6, Approval of Meeting Minutes.
I would move that we approve the meeting minutes for August 12th, August 19th, and August 26th.
26th was last meeting that I wasn't at, right?
Correct.
Do you want to do them separately, or?
It's fine if you want to run for it.
We've done them together.
All right, that's fine.
I mean, you don't have to be here there. If you had a problem with them.
Nope.
I second.
You moved and seconded. Any questions on them? All those in favor?
Aye.
7:05, Appointment with Council on Aging Director Ed Snapp, Chairman of the Screening Committee, here to discuss the recruitment of a Council on Aging Director. Only I don't see Ed, I see you guys, but--
Well, Valerie and I are here. Valerie's the Vice Chair of the Screening Committee, and I'm kind of the spokesperson, I guess. So essentially, the candidate, Kimberly D., declined the position just based on, you know, some uncertainty within the position and salaries, and, you know, however, we are still moving forward. The Screening Committee is presently scheduled to meet on Thursday, and will hopefully have a recommendation to agenda meeting, so we just suggest we table it for another couple of weeks and bring it back in then and see where we're at.
The meeting is Thursday, Dave?
This Thursday is a meeting, yes. 6 o'clock, I believe, as far as I know, we're still scheduled to go, so.
Meeting over there, Dave, at the--
Senior Center. Senior Center.
All right, I would move to table Agenda Item 2.1 to our next meeting.
Moved and seconded to table Discussion. When's the next meeting?
September 23rd.
Thank you.
September 23rd.
9:23. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see the Wests here.
Thanks, Valerie.
Were you folks here for anything in particular?
We're here to listen to the appointment for Conservation Commission. Are you going to do that tonight?
No, that will be, Conservation Commission--
They're meeting tomorrow.
Right. They'll be making a recommendation tomorrow that will be taken up by the Board on the, I expect, on the 23rd of September, so the same night that you're here for the poll petition.
I just knew that you were here for the other thing, and I didn't want you to be sitting here if you didn't want to be.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thanks. We'd be glad to have you. 3.1, Review and Approve Staffing Plan for Treasurer/Collector Office. Andy?
So we talked about this at the last meeting. Laid out the plan that we've put together, working with Beth Ann Scheid, who's here tonight, and also Kate Stacy, and really all of the staff down there, to try to properly address the staffing in the Treasurer/Collector's Office. I've said a couple of times in the past that what we've really come to realize and didn't fully appreciate when Kathy Rossback was here, was that Kathy was really trying to, you know, to be the good soldier and get by with what she had down there, and probably should have come forward at some point and said, "I really need, you know, I really need more help," but in light of, you know, that's just the way Kathy is. Kathy will do, you know, will do what she can with what she's given. But, you know, over the last better part of a year, as we've been, after Kathy left and as we've transitioned to Kate and to Beth Ann, we've been able to look at the operation down there and see that it's really a little bit, it's really been quite understaffed. And so we're trying to address that now, and also trying to factor in some changes that are coming, changes that will hopefully have diminished impact on staff, such as lockbox, and also some things that will have an impact on staffing, such as moving the water collections over, which the Water Commission has signed off on. So Beth Ann, in particular, has done a lot of work on brainstorming this idea and given us some good ideas. So to kind of summarize the positions that we're looking at, proposing to go to a formal combined treasurer/collector. Historically, we've had the elected collector and the appointed treasurer, which Kathy held both positions. Earlier this year, in the beginning of January this year, the Legislature approved a Home Rule petition that converted the collector position to appointed by the Board of Selectmen. So this allows us to formally combine the two positions. And at the last meeting, Carolyn raised a question about whether that, whether the whole staffing plan triggers a provision in the Charter that calls for hearings and some additional deliberation before reorganization comes into being. And talked to Counsel, and there's an opinion in your, or an email in your packets tonight about that. And as he says in there, this is not the kind of change that was contemplated by that provision of the Charter. Section 5.1 of the Charter, you know, that's the kind of change that that contemplates is moving to a DPW or moving to a formal public safety department, where you have a public safety director, and then you have a, you know, a police chief and a fire chief reporting through a director, so. So the provisions of the Charter don't get triggered. This just becomes a, it's really just a staffing, just a staffing plan. So the formally combined treasurer/collector, the assistant treasurer/collector, which the position that we've had for a long time, and Rebecca Hershey has held that position for the last several years, and we don't really anticipate any change in that position. And then two new positions or sort of a reconstituted position and a new position. Department Assistant, which would be 30 hours a week, which would be the primary person at the collections desk, and would also take in payroll and do other things as time allows. And then a collections clerk at something less than 20 hours a week. We've put it in at 18. And that would be really just to work the counter primarily and post-collections and perform related tasks as time allows. We think most of the time for that position would be spent at the counter, so. There's a kind of chicken and egg situation which exists. I'd love to be able to tell you exactly what I thought this was going to cost, but several of the positions have to be classified, and so I kind of need the Board's direction in that regard before we can go out and classify them, particularly the treasurer/collector. I think the other positions, the assistant doesn't have to go anywhere. Department Assistant position exists in the Compensation and Classification Plan, and then I've recommended the collections clerk as a grade two, so. Once we settle on where the treasurer/collector is classified, then we can talk more clearly about what the funding would be for that. We would also have to do some minor modifications to the office layout down there, primarily at the counter and the desks behind the counter. We think we can do that all with in-house staff and within the budget that we have available for facilities. And then Beth Ann has offered to help transition to Kate Stacy, who has indicated an interest in the combined position. Kate's proven over the last 10 months that she's a really top-notch employee, and so we want to keep her if we can, and happy to expand the positions of her, the duties of her position so that she can take on the combined position. And Beth Ann also did some, also looked at what some other communities do in terms of how they're staffed, and by and large, we are, and I'll pass this out, by and large, we are understaffed in comparison to comparable communities. There's a lot going on down there. There's a lot that needs to happen. There's a lot of change going on. There's been a lot of change over the last year as we've transitioned to new software. That was certainly a burden on the staff, and they dealt with that very well, but it is, you know, it is a hard thing to do, but it was a necessary thing to do. But, you know, we've talked a number of times about our tax delinquencies and tax titles, and, you know, in order to get caught up on those things, we really need to be realistic about the way we're staffed. I don't know if I have the total with me. We have about $1.6 million outstanding in delinquent taxes and tax bill. And I understand the, you know, an easy response to the staffing plan would be, you know, "How are we going to pay for this?" Well, if we don't address the staffing shortage, how are we ever going to get caught up on those delinquencies? And I know from discussions that the Board has had in the past that that is a concern and something that we want to get under control, understandably, and so we think that this is the way to attack this, to address that problem, address the delinquencies and the tax titles, and set us up for success going forward. And Beth Ann is here, if you have any questions for her.
Just, I have one. Today, we have part-time treasurer, part-time collector, right? To me, it makes sense to combine it so that we've got a full-time person that handles, can handle both. The other question I have is, these positions would then report to that position, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So in terms of office oversight, if you will, and office management, it would be one person over all three of them?
Correct, right. Contrary to what it is now, where--
It's kind of split up, right?
It's split, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I think that helps because then processes can be more in line and more consistent across, you know, the office, and that usually makes for efficiencies, too.
Yeah, and the other thing, and I didn't, your comment made me think of it, I didn't mention it earlier. We want to make sure everybody down there is cross-trained, everybody can do everybody else's job.
That was going to be my next one.
And so this, you know, this will allow us to do that.
And what about the payroll piece? The only thing about that is, that is a distinct function. Would somebody end up being, like, trained as backup for that position as well?
Yes, yeah. Well, as it stands now, we've got Susan Bresnik down there, who's the payroll clerk. She's been down there for a month and a half or so. So she does payroll now. Rebecca is capable of doing it, she's done it in the past. She did it occasionally when Cheryl Simeno was here. So those two are both capable of doing it now. We would like to have everybody trained to be able to do that if, you know, if something came up and somebody was out, you know, if you had somebody on vacation--
Somebody's on vacation.
Yeah, somebody's on vacation, then somebody else gets sick. And, you know, we had an issue this week where that could have been a, where that could have been an issue, but luckily, because of the fact that we've got two people cross-trained, we're okay with it.
Yes, so I did research, I had actually talked to Beth Ann. I tried to schedule some time to meet with them to try and understand it a little bit better, but she has similar results to what I have here. And if you look at the total staff hours, you have three people there, and that's pretty much what the Tax Collector/Treasurer's Office is staffed with in the communities that I've looked at. It seems to be a full-time tax collector/treasurer, full-time assistant, and then almost a full-time HR, payroll, you know, benefits processor, payroll, and maybe helping at the counter. So I would support possibly three positions, just from where I'm coming from in comparison with other communities. You know, Groton, actually Mike Hartnett told me that they instituted a lockbox, and I know we haven't had enough time to really understand or to know how it's going to decrease the foot traffic, but he said it's about 40 percent, and he's--
Forty percent use it?
Yeah, he said after four to five billing cycles, we have diverted approximately 35 to 40 percent. So there is going to be a little bit lower of foot traffic. So that's something I would support, but then I was looking at also if we combine the position. Right now, currently, even if we combine the two budgets, we're only looking at $55,066 for the tax collector-treasurer, and that's way under what area tax collector-treasurers are currently earning, so that is going to have to be definitely adjusted.
Correct.
But I think we can work with the clerk money that's already in there. The only other thing that I have is I need job descriptions, because right now, the assistant tax collector-treasurer, she is supposed to maintain financial records, receive payments from taxpayers in person and by mail, record payments, process collects, posts, maintaining records on all taxes paid to the town. When she went through the Comp and Class Plan, the reason she was the core is because she has that responsibility under her. So we kind of need to look at all the job descriptions to figure out, you know, I think the cross-training is absolutely where it's at, but then would we, you know, kind of need to appropriate the money to have them at the same, if they're going to be responsible for the same types of things, they need to be paid equally, so.
Well, not really. I mean, if you think about how it's done in, you know, in other kinds of companies, having somebody--
having somebody to do backup isn't necessarily the same thing as having somebody...
Well, it depends on who's going to be responsible for it. From the sounds of what his staffing plan that put together, that you're going to have a new collection clerk be responsible for it. So, and I kind of looked at what the other area towns...
What, payroll?
No, for collections.
Okay.
What the other area towns' job descriptions are. And it does seem to be segregated. Who did I speak to? C. Pepper, Groth, Lunberg, Air Littleton, and Maynard. And they all seem to be kind of, except for Air. Air's really out there. They have a tax collector town clerk, one position, so it's different. But that seems to be what the surrounding communities do.
Well, I mean, I have no problem with, you know, working with HRS to put these together based on, and I think Carolyn's right, we should review the job descriptions and make sure that they're in line with what we want those responsibilities to be. And perhaps you can give us some assistance in making sure that the right language is in there and then figure out what the grades should be.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm all for that.
So, yeah, that's where I'm coming from. And then we'd have a better idea of the cost and how we can afford. But I would support, just me personally, I would support combining to a full-time tax collector treasurer and kind of redoing the existing clerk's position to have additional hours and take on additional responsibilities. But I wouldn't be hard across to have four people down there.
You're saying four, including the treasurer or collector?
Yeah.
All right. So is, I want to just make sure I'm understanding what you're saying. We're seeing a recommendation for the creation of a fourth position. And you're saying you would not go along with that?
No, that's excessive. Even if you look at what Beth Ann had put together for us and you look at the total hours, they're all...
Pretty much three full-time positions or two positions and a part-time.
If you look at that chart and when you look at the average, the shortfall, somewhere around sixteen hours a week, looking at comparable towns with lockbox. What's different is we've just made all of these changes. They just converted to VEDAR, there's catch-up work, lockbox is new. And it takes a period of time for that dust to settle. If you put on top of that new employees, cross-training, everything else, they're really, you know, short of not being able to catch your breath, there really isn't any sense of being able to make progress. And so I guess I feel like at least for the next year, there needs to be access to this additional buffer to get to where the dust settles in all these multiple areas. And then the combination of that time for the dust to settle with lockbox settling in, getting the efficiencies of people being trained, and really figuring out the best way to get the job done, so to speak, that then... And then the other piece of that that I think, I don't know if it's in here or not, if the town is able to go from weekly payroll to bi-weekly, a lot of the towns that are in this average are doing bi-weekly payroll, which means that every other week, they've got additional time to throw at projects and collections and things like, which we don't have downstairs. We're doing weekly payroll. And so I think that there's just all these things that could settle out within the next six months, nine months to a year that are, you know, if you can make the transition from weekly to bi-weekly payroll, that's a big difference. But if that doesn't happen, that's a difference between us and everyone else who's showing the slower average.
Andy? Well, let me just start. Colin, you had a question.
So Beth Ann, just to reiterate what you were saying, you just kind of, you feel this extra person is to get your heads above water so that you can start catching up on these delinquent accounts and that sort of thing?
Delinquent accounts, well, you know, were new on lockbox, but then, you know, no fault of anybody except for Murphy's Law, you end up with computers don't work. Or then all of a sudden, you aren't able to pull in import files because of computer issues on both sides. And there's just been all these bumps along the road. And the fact that you have a weekly payroll, that's a good seventeen hours a week that you've lost that alternating payroll week. You know, all these other towns that you see on the chart that do a bi-weekly payroll, that's a big differential. And so when I look at this fourth body, Carolyn, I see that's the buffer. And if, as lockbox settles down and if payroll could go to bi-weekly, you know, I don't know, we might be in a different situation in a year. So maybe if there was a way to have that, a guaranteed floater or, you know, a contract for a one-year scenario. So there's, you don't want to put the town in a long-term position if it's not needed. But we are in a crisis, not a crisis, Colin.
That was the suggestion that I was going to make, that Beth Ann just made maybe this fourth person be a temporary position, a one- or two-year position. Then that way, we can revisit it after the temporary period. And if they're needed, then we can talk about it again. If they're not...
Yeah. And Beth Ann and I were talking late this afternoon, and the issue of a floater, or the idea of a floater came up. And there are really sort of five peak periods in the collector's office. There's the four due dates for property taxes, and then there's the, which coincide with the four due dates for water collections. So you get that every three months. And then you've got the primary excise due date, which is March, right? Or goes out in March?
It's usually the middle of March.
Middle of March. So you've got those sort of five peak periods. You know, there's always the challenge of how you staff for the peak periods. You know, it's like shopping malls that build parking lots to accommodate the Christmas season. The other eleven months, they don't need them. So we don't, you know, we don't necessarily want to add staff that we're not going to need year-round. But maybe a floater is a way to get around that or a way to manage that so that they're sort of dedicated to the collector's office during those five peak periods. And then the other weeks of the year, and that's like a two-week, like two weeks each of those five periods. So ten weeks out of the year, and then the other forty-two weeks, they're available to, you know, to do other things in other departments. And some towns have been able to work that quite well. A community that I worked in a long time ago, they had a floating clerk. And, you know, if there was a mailing that needed to go out, that's where she worked. And if there was, you know, if there were collections coming in, she worked in collections. So it's something to think about.
The only concern, or something that would, I think, need to be worked out, as far as I'm concerned with that, would be, to whom would that floater be responsible? Okay? Because if that person were going to, I mean, like the way this is laid out, if that person were reporting to the treasurer or collector position, I'd be fine with it. But if we're talking about potentially using that person in other areas, then you run into, well, who are they taking direction from? How does that all work?
Sure.
Okay? The other thing that, just from my point of view, is if we're not certain that we really need those hours on a long-term basis, and it sounds like we still have some things to figure out, okay? And we have this little bubble of opportunity that we need to get through, I would be hesitant to hire someone. I would entertain someone as a contractor, okay? I would not, I would not want to hire somebody knowing that maybe, you know, a year down the road, we're going to be eliminating that position.
But if they walk into it as knowing it's a temporary position, I mean...
I disagree. It's kind of, I agree with you. It should be more of a contract.
I think if you held out a one-year contract for somebody at eighteen hours a week, and if it was somebody who enjoyed vertical learning curves and was good with numbers and detail and was just looking for something to fill in part-time, I think it's possible.
Well, I mean, there's certainly a lot of people looking for, you know, part-time temporary.
And I, I guess what I'd, what I'd say is that I don't want to, I don't want to get overly hung up on the fourth position because it's, obviously, it's the, it's not the, it's not the most important piece of this staffing plan. You know, if there's agreement on the rest of the staffing plan, I'd be more than happy to say, let's, you know, let's start to implement and figure out how, you know, figure out what we need. Maybe we build some money into the budget so we have it if we need it. If we don't need it, we don't spend it.
Okay. I have a suggestion. Just to be prepared in case you do need that other position, temporary contract position, whatever, I think it would be good for us at the same time we're doing the reviews of job descriptions or rewrites, that we do that one, too.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Be prepared for it so that that forces us to think about what is that position going to consist of if we were to fill it either temporarily or not, okay? I think it forces us to look at that. The thing that I am concerned with and that would swing me to making that permanent is we cannot fall behind on our collections. We are not current now, and we need to get current, all right? There aren't any bills that the bill collector lets you just keep floating. And we don't have the revenue and the luxury of saying, oh, that's okay, pay us later. I'm sorry, that's, it's an obligation, okay? And it is the way that it is. And the day that I can't afford my house and my taxes, I will move in with my children or do whatever I have to do.
They'll help you out so you don't have to move in.
I kind of have a different ideology. I don't believe that we should be going after the people so hard that have, at least that are having a hard times, to support our spending and to increase staffing. That's just not how I feel.
Well, no, I'm not suggesting that. I'm saying we can't have a lot of money out there on the books as being owed to us.
Well, I think our collection rates are pretty good and very in comparison with other communities that I've looked at. So I don't think we're really, we want to stay on top of things, but that aside, Andy, to go back to what you were saying, where I'd be coming from is definitely supporting the full-time tax collector treasurer. Of course, the assistant would stay there. But with the introduction of the lockbox, like you said, it took him four or five billing cycles till he got to about forty percent, Mr. Hartnett.
It was like a little over a year.
Yeah. And the possibility of us going to bi-monthly, bi-monthly, yeah, monthly payroll, bi-weekly...
I mean, by, yeah, you were right.
Yeah, okay.
By annual.
And I don't know, I don't know if it's in the union contract.
It's in some of them. I think we've got agreement in three of them.
In three of them?
Yeah. So that would be something we'd have to...
And we've looked at that before. I think there might be some support for that. That's going to be quite a reduction of work. And I think a thirty-hour position down there is going to be more than...
But see, but the thing is, we don't know at this point the timing for transitioning from weekly to bi-weekly. I talked to one town, it happened over a four-year period. You know, so there's...
Well, we looked at happening before. It was...
No, I'm just saying that it depends on the contracts, and you might, you might make the, it might be half the employees, and you have weekly for some and bi-weekly for some, and over the course of a year or two, it happens. But that's an unknown. We don't know exactly when that's going to happen. We have hopes and aspirations as to when that might happen. But that's, when that happens is a big difference.
Okay. So time out on that one. And maybe that's something that we should talk about sooner rather than later. Because I, just listening to this, I don't understand why you can't just do it.
Right.
Okay, so...
Right. Any change in wages or working conditions has to be negotiated with the collective bargaining group.
I understand that, but, you know...
So if we don't have the authority in there, in the contracts, in all of the contracts to do it, then it makes it hard for us to move forward.
But let's say that it's one group that's holding back.
That's minimal.
That's big deal. You're putting in a few people, you know, for weekly. The majority of them then are bi-weekly.
Right.
And therefore, your work, the amount of work you have to do changes significantly.
Right.
So I think we need to look at that in terms of the numbers and how would that impact it by group, really? You know, because we have a lot of non-union folks, too.
Right, right. So it would not be a large number of people, but it would be easier if we're doing everybody, whether we're doing it weekly or bi-weekly, it's, you know, it gets muddy when you're doing some weekly and some bi-weekly. So, but we'd want to do it all together. And what we talked about with the unions is, we understand that this is a change when you go from weekly to bi-weekly. And we committed last year when we were in negotiations with them that we would only do it in a five-thursday month so that they have that cushion of three big paychecks rather than five smaller paychecks. We did that in a community that I worked in some years ago. I wasn't real gung-ho about it, to be honest with you, when the change was made. It was a pretty quick transition and a pretty quick adjustment on my part. And I found that I actually managed my money better that way. So I think if we pick the right month and, you know, four months out of the year, we have five pay periods. So that would be when we would, when we would look at it. But again, we'll double-check the contracts and...
I would just like to know, what do your numbers look like? Because if you're talking about eighty-five percent of the people could easily go to bi-weekly, then why wouldn't we do it? I mean, we can't be, we can't be managing by exception, I guess is my concern, okay? You know, if you've got a whole lot of a few people, it doesn't make sense.
Right.
Now we have the other issue of the funding. As you know, we have the COA director and the billing department assistants that are going to need additional funds. But we can talk about that at our meeting.
Yeah, exactly. We will. Colin? I mean, I'm inclined to say, go out and get the, I'm fine with the positions as they stand and as they've been described to me. The one that I'm not sure about is that fourth position. But I would like to see what would that job description look like?
Sure.
Okay? And what would those responsibilities be? Are you both comfortable with that?
We have the job descriptions.
Okay. So we'll work with HRS on that, get job descriptions and get all four positions...
Yeah, because, I mean, ultimately, Carolyn's right. We need to know what would this cost us.
Right.
Okay?
You're going to, we're going to do job descriptions and classify four positions. The funding, the decision about the fourth position is...
Up in the air still.
Yeah. And really, it's mostly three. The assistant position, we should look at the job description to make sure that it's accurate for what's currently, what's currently being done and what we expect it to be. But, you know, that probably will be the least amount of change of the four.
Yeah, I would even support having, making one position a forty-hour position and then looking at reducing the hours later than to add another complete position.
Well, I mean...
They don't even have the room now.
We can work out the details of that. I'm more concerned about what are we seeing? There is one other piece that I thought of for that floater position, for lack of a better, you know, description. And that is if we, as a town, want to get to the point where we're providing the kinds of trainings and development that we need to for all of our employees, not just our union folks, okay? That we need to build in time, if you will...
Right.
So that people can attend training sessions. And I'm not saying they're going to be in training a lot, but those are those things that you sometimes don't plan for. And lots of people don't end up doing them because there simply isn't somebody to do their job.
Right. Yeah, that's a good point.
So that's another form of backup or cross-training, I guess you could say. Okay, so that's the only piece I'd add to that in terms of needing it. Okay, well, we'll see what you come back with.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Where are we at?
Three point two.
Thank you, Colin. Three point two is review and approve standard operating guideline for duty officer at the fire EMS department.
So I know you weren't here last thing...
Sue, I know you weren't here last week. The chief had come in.
Okay.
He, they always had a policy where if you were on-call, you were paid a dollar an hour. And I guess they did away with that sometime in the last few years. I wasn't even aware of that. So what he'd like to do is have the duty officer that's on-call be paid a dollar an hour for being on-call because his movement's restricted. He has to stay in town. You know, he would be paid, if he was called out, he would be paid the rate.
Yeah, I think the chief had explained that to me before the meeting last week.
We supported that, approved that. But I just asked for it to be included in his policy so that the account had authorization to process that payment. So I'm assuming that's, that's what he takes?
Yes, that's what this SOG does.
So I'm assuming this was already approved? He just added in for the dollar? Is that...
This is a new, this is a new policy that he put together.
Oh, so it's not a revision, it's just brand-new?
Correct.
Oh, then the only question I had, if it's brand-new, Andy, maybe you can ask him. I have no problem approving it, but he has here in the event, number F, "In the event that weather conditions are likely to change during the day such that burn permits would likely be rescinded, the on-call chief may elect to ban permits for the entire day." But this is an SOG just for the duty officer, so I'm not sure why the on-call chief is reflected in it. Other than that, I thought it was great.
Yeah, I think if you're uncomfortable with that, you want to strike F and re-letter the rest of it.
Well, he might have a good reason for it to be there. I don't want to strike anything. I mean, I would approve it if he would just ask the question.
I mean, it does say draft, too, so just put a question mark on that one, that's all.
Yeah, and he might have a very good reason for it to be there.
And it may be because it's a draft, you know? I mean, I have no problem with it. I'm glad he's reinstating that.
Yeah, me too.
So do we need a vote on that?
Yeah, I would move to approve the draft policy for the standard operating guideline for the duty officer, SOG OPS-14-002. Do you need that in the motion?
Second.
Do you approve them by the SOGs usually?
Okay.
I don't think there's ever been one that's come in front of me before this.
Oh?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. You used the word draft in that motion.
Do you want me just to approve it as presented?
Yeah.
I would move to amend the motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And tell them thank you. Just ask them about F, that would be great.
3.3, review requests of Unitil to cross alter or construct within a public way for installation of gas services at 10 School Street and 7 Smith Street. Andy?
Standard cross-alter request from Unitil, both for gas services.
Okay.
I would move that we approve the request of Unitil to cross alter or construct within a public way for installation of gas service at 10 School Street and 7 Smith Street.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.4, confirm October 21, 2014 as the date for the special town meeting. Also vote to close the warrant at 5:00 p.m. on September 16, 2014. Sign the warrant on September 23, 2014.
So in the packet was a first draft of the warrant and I did notice a couple of typos that we've already addressed. And we've received two additional articles, one, Sue, that you brought forth.
Yeah, do you have that? I didn't bring my...
I think I put it in the, in what was in front of you tonight with the revised agenda.
Oh, I have a revised agenda?
Yeah, 3.4 at the top.
Yeah, I grabbed it out of our mail. Is this the one? I didn't even have a chance to read it yet.
Yeah, that's it, Carolyn.
Thank you.
She's got it.
Do you want me to read it?
If you'd like. I'm going to just incorporate it anyway since the warrant is still open.
I just wanted to run this by the two of you to see if you were okay with adding this as an article. Just some background, I was looking at the website to try to find agendas and meeting minutes for a couple of meetings I was interested in and had a hard time finding them. And then when I really started looking, I said, "Oh, wow, some of them are very late putting things out here. Some of them don't put things out there at all." And I also had somebody else talk to me about that and said, "Wait a minute, you know, we should be able to just go into the websites. Why do some boards have minutes and agendas out there and others don't, you know?" And we were actually going to do this as a citizen's petition, but then I thought, "Well, why not just ask my board and see if you're inclined to put it on?" And it's actually to ask folks to make sure that those do go on to the website. So it's kind of like an addition to the open meeting requirements of posting minutes and posting agendas. So I'll read it for you. It's "At the same time that it posts its meeting agendas, each multiple member body shall cause meetings and agendas to be published in the calendar on the town's website. Each multiple member body shall cause meeting minutes to be posted to the town's website as soon as said minutes are approved." My suggestion, I know that there are some boards that don't have support staff or can't go in there. It's just posting of a PDF or whatever. So I talked to Andy and said, "I think that's something that, you know, that our office should do for boards that don't have that kind of support staff." So in the case of people who do have it, that's fine, but if not, we should provide it for them.
Have you ever uploaded anything to that website? Have you ever tried to post minutes to it?
I've never had to do that.
You should sit down and try it. A lot of the boards and committees are all volunteers. They have absolutely no staff. And I'm talking from experience, as being the clerk on capital planning, the clerk on finance and a couple other committees, and it's very time-consuming. Now, if we, I agree with you. I'd love to see all that stuff on the website. I'd love to get as much information out to the folks as possible. So I mean, I'm not arguing that point.
Yeah, I got you.
What I'm arguing or concerned about is our volunteers have had it. I don't know if you've noticed, but they're quitting in droves. A lot of people are frustrating and you're...
I'm not asking, if it's people who don't already have access to it and aren't used to doing it, I wouldn't ask them to do it. I'd say...
If they have staff, I've got no problem with it, but...
Yeah. No, but what I'm saying is, I think that our office should provide that support.
To the volunteer board.
So once the meeting, you know, I mean, the agenda is posted, it's officially logged with the town clerk. At that point, if it's one of those boards that, you know, they're a volunteer board, they make a copy available to our office. We upload that for them. Same thing with the minutes. When the minutes get approved, we will do that for them. That's not something that is difficult if it's something that you do all the time. Andy, I've never heard you or Karen complain about...
No, it's...
How that happens.
No, we...
Or difficulty in doing it.
We try to keep the selectmen's page up to date and, you know, there's only, I forget if we, I think we have about 15 administrative users of the website. It's not available to volunteers, it's only available to staff. And many, you know, many staff people cover multiple boards. Like Karen Chapman covers the ZBA, but also the Housing Authority and Town Properties and things like that. So it's, you know, sort of three-in-one right there. And, you know, when you do it on a regular basis, it's not that arduous. It's about 30 seconds to close to set of minutes. So it goes pretty quick.
So I mean, it might be a training thing because people aren't familiar enough with what the process is, but, you know, and here I am volunteering our office to do that, but I think it should be something that we volunteer in.
It would take up a lot of their time. I don't know, did you talk to the town clerk since everybody's going to file them there anyway?
Yeah, yeah, actually I did. I talked to Kathy and she thought it was a good idea. I said, you know, "One of the things that I've heard is, why would I have to go, why should I have to go to the town clerk to get copies of minutes? They should be available, you know, because our board puts them out there and a couple of others do, too." So it's just the inconsistency of that. And from the standpoint, like you said, of transparency, you know, all of us should be doing the same thing.
Yeah, and we can work, you know, with the clerk's office to, maybe they help out on the agenda piece and the calendar piece and we do the minutes piece or something like that, so it's not a big burden. Like you said, they're posting the agendas anyway, so.
Yeah, that's... Sue, I have no problem with it.
Okay. So...
And I think you're right. I think people are used to being able to go to the web. I'm, you know, I'm as guilty of it. I, you know, check a website for another town if I'm looking for some information. It's usually the first place I start, so it's nice when it's available.
Yeah. It just, it makes it much more comprehensive and, yes.
Are you going to set a starting date for this? You know, we'd like to start all minutes on by...
Well, I think it would be when the, if town meeting adopts it, that's when it would essentially go into effect.
Once it got voted on.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Well, I actually think you're making it too restrictive by making it by law. I just think you should make it a policy.
More support. But I think that, I think the problem with, or the concern that I had with that, okay? And the reason that I did it this way was I didn't want it to be construed as the board or selectmen is telling other elected boards or committees how to, you know, what they have to do. My feeling is this is something that the town should say, "Yes, this is important to us and yes, we do want that." And they are, in essence, the ones that should command us all.
But since as of by law it has no punishment, there's no real incentive to get anybody to do it.
Well, however, and it's funny, it's funny that you say that. You know why, though? Because somebody said that to me, too. And my response is, your punishment is, if folks expect it to be there and it's not there, you as a board member are going to get phone calls, okay? Because they voted on it, they said, "We want you to do this," and you're not doing it. And if you can handle the heat, then go for it. But to me, that's a pretty good reason why, you know, you should comply with it.
Sue.
So I don't see compliance as an issue.
Like I said, I have no problem with putting this before town meeting, but to Andrea's point, I, you might want to give, we might want to give them a little bit of a cushion of, like a grace period where they can catch up on these things, like say, implement it as of the first of the year or something like that.
If you want.
Well, yeah, and for how great, from like, this is your meeting, just say, "From this meeting on, I've got 30 years of minutes you can have and download anywhere you want." And I can almost guarantee you, no one will read them.
I would say that it starts with any meeting after the law is passed, okay? I don't think that we're asking people to go back in their archives.
Yeah, I guess I misunderstood Andrea's question. When you asked it, I was thinking, start complying from the date of adoption. I didn't mean that on September 22nd, the day after town meeting, you have to have all, you have to go back to...
To catch up, you know?
Yeah, to the origins of the town.
I wouldn't expect anybody to have to do that.
Right.
Yeah, we don't, the committees and boards usually don't save them once they're filed with the town clerk. I don't leave them on my computer.
That'd be a little bit of a nightmare.
Lisa?
Yeah, in support of your motion, there's a large dependency nowadays on the town website. And you have the pipeline and information. People who can't get up here to get minutes, I myself go to the town or township website regularly and if something's not there, I stop looking for it and look. So just in support of that, the townspeople, if it's there, they'll go look for it. I think our website could be...
You can use that floater person to update our website.
A volunteer.
Now, there you go. That'll work. We need a webmaster.
Do you need a motion to put that on there?
No, I'll just add that in. And this afternoon Kathy Swafford sent up an article as well requesting some additional funding for professional services for updates to the bylaw, to the code book. I'll just incorporate that. If the schedule, if the schedule is acceptable, then we'll just go forward in that regard and put it on at the next meeting to sign the warrant. I expect it will be in, it will be in good shape for free cash if we have it on the 21st of October and, but I'll know that certainly by the next meeting, so.
Well, yeah, when's our year-end package going to be?
Kid's working on that still. So, you know, it's all part and parcel of the year-end and the free cash is all wrapped together, so.
So it's an early fall town meeting.
Yeah, again, if you're okay with that, we did try to accelerate it with the COA Director funding out there, that issue. If we could address that sooner than later, that would be helpful.
We've got the building inspector position as well.
Yeah, that one, we've got a little flexibility in the budget, but less so with the COA Director.
Okay. I'm okay with the 21st. Do we need a motion for that?
No. If we're okay, then...
I have no problem.
The only question I had, Andy, is I know you email everyone about the warrant. I didn't know, speaking of volunteer boards and committees, just putting notices in their box, because I know Sweden kept one on capital, so a lot of them aren't on email.
I'll double-check and see if we did a hard copy mailing as well, since so many members of the Capital Planning Committee are also employees or on other boards. I didn't think that one would be necessary, but I'll double-check to make sure that everybody...
And that's fine, it's not necessary.
And we put it on the website as well.
So you usually, you send the notice that we're confirming the 21st?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know when the warrant's closing. I haven't heard of any needs out there, but you never know.
Okay, 3.5, review mandatory referral notice from the planning board related to proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, this was on last week, it's the same. We wanted you to be able to make comments if you'd like.
No, I'm fine. Did you people have any issues, concerns, questions?
The wind energy, I'm really glad they worked on that. It's pretty much a template of what all the communities are doing and the rest of it's just cleaning up definitions, so I had no comment.
Okay. So with thanks, no comments.
And just to let everyone know that the public hearing is Monday, September 22nd for the planning board, if they're interested.
The what?
Public hearing.
Oh.
Sue, before we move on, could I get a recess, please?
Sure, good. Five minutes, please, Hartley.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, we're on 3.6, discuss creation of sustainability committee. Carolyn, you're the one that had submitted that. Would you like to talk about it a little?
Yeah, that was under the coals, but I've been talking about it for three years, I think. Did you get a chance to read what Tingsborough did? I handed that out a couple of weeks ago.
No.
Their sustainability committee. Well, my thoughts were just generalized. I'd like to see it be a budget sustainability committee slash revenue type committee. And I really liked what Tingsborough did with us. They're kind of common in municipalities. They work on budget projections, what we can do. How they set it up, though, is they used a member of their school committees, which I think is really important in to bring, you know, kind of a balanced approach. which I think is really important in to bring, you know, kind of a balanced approach to looking at what our future needs are gonna be, as well as, I think they had, I liked how they had set it up. I think they had the school committee members, a member of the board of selectmen and a member of the finance committee, and then they had citizens at large.
I think probably the reason that they had, is that a regional school? No, that's probably why they had the schools involved.
But having the communication flow on a committee would be really good. So we'd know, you know, I know Mr. Shins made the comment a few times that we're not always sure when they're gonna be asking for an increase, but if they're on the budget sustainability committee and they're helping us do projections, we're gonna have an idea a few years ahead of time at what they're looking at down the road.
I don't know, having been there. I don't, I'm, school aside, I, I think, let's just talk about sustainability and, and what you consider to be their response, that, the responsibilities of that group. Because I'm almost thinking that we don't need something quite that, that formal or that additional to, to what we have. Indy, when we do our revenue projections now, right, you get together with Kim and whom else?
For the most part, it's Kim and Vicky.
Okay.
The assessor. Obviously some conversations historically with Kathy Rossback and.
Well, that would make sense from a.
Yeah, yeah. But really, it's, it, it comes out of the, it comes out of the information that, that Kim takes in as the accountant and, and Vicky's estimate of what new growth is going to be.
Okay, so one piece of, of what you're calling sustainability committee would, would be to talk about revenues. Do we ever include the chairman of the finance committee or a member of this board?
We haven't, but I think that would be, I think it would be helpful to do that. I was at a, I think I talked to you about this. So I was at a, a, a finance session a few months ago and it was presented by.
Arlington.
Yeah, it was presented by the Arlington.
Yeah, I remember.
Fincom chairman. And they do a, they get together a couple of times in the fall or early winter. And it's a, it's a loose group. It's not a committee, it's not a standing committee.
Like a working group.
It's a working group, yeah. And it's the, down there, it's a town manager, finance director, I think, chairman of the board of selectmen, chairman Fincom, probably chairman of the school committee, and, and then the finance staff, the collector, treasurer, auditor, account, whatever position they have, an assessor. And they, they look at all of the, all of the elements of, of the revenue, just on the revenue side, and come up with a consensus revenue number. And it's similar to what the state does for the state budget. When the, when the secretary of administration of finance pulls together the treasurer and, and DOR staff and, and the House and Senate leadership. And everybody, everybody gets on the same page in terms of, of revenues. Once revenues are out of the way, once everybody can say, okay, this is, this is our revenue number, whatever it is, it's X, it's, it's out of the way, then the, you know, then you can just focus on revenues. And, and that's what, that's what Al Tosti, the gentleman from, from Arlington, really imparted on us was the benefit of getting revenues settled and agreed upon, get it out of the way, then focus on how you're gonna, what you're gonna do with.
Because that becomes, you know what, this is what we got to work with.
Yeah, and if you're, you know, if, as you're going, you know, and you get that out of the way, say in November or December, and then you're, you're just left for the next several months working on, on, on the spending plan. If you're still arguing about revenues in February or March, it makes it really hard to, to nail down your, your expenditures. So that would be the, that would be the approach that I would prefer. You know, we've talked a lot about committees and volunteers and how we're, you know, a comment was made a few minutes ago about how we're, you know, volunteers are overburdened and overwhelmed. We can't fill a lot of the spots that we have now. So I think with a, with a couple of meetings, two, probably two or three meetings of, of those officials and the, and the finance staff probably would, would accomplish what, would accomplish the same, the same goal. And then if there are.
Well, it's funny because. Carolyn, I wanted to ask you, how different is what you were suggesting?
Well, basically, Tingsborough's using the staff members and maybe a couple of outside people.
Okay.
But we have two different issues. I don't disagree with Andy that it should have a member of the board of selectmen, a member of the finance committee and, and anybody else in the financial team meetings, if not to participate, but to listen and to understand the situation. In fact, as a general government rep, I emailed him and asked him if I could sit in so I could know more what's going on with our finances. And I was told I would not be invited to such things. So I think that we do need to open up the lines of communication. And that's one of the biggest problems, the information doesn't flow. But my sustainability committee isn't actually looking at revenue projections. Those are actual numbers that we're looking at, what our, our, our revenues coming in. I was thinking more progressive long-term. You know, there's a lot of talk about, and I know you, I think on your goals, you, you were talking about maybe a business planning strategic committee. How are we going to raise revenues enough in the future to meet our current stand, our current spending?
It almost sounds like what you're talking about is, is a vision plan, vision planning.
Yeah, but you need people to come together and see where we're at, what the situation is, where our future needs are gonna be and how are we going to meet them. So it's, it's, it's not necessarily to sit down and put together.
How does it differ from capital planning then?
Capital's just looking at what the departments need for capital expenditures, for a truck, for, I mean, they could certainly take the five-year plan or, or talk to departments, see what their needs are. You're talking about concrete items.
But isn't that.
That's not a way to raise revenues. You're not gonna raise.
No, 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 no. That's, that's, that's something separate. Okay, so, so one, we have revenue projections and how, and how do we do those, okay?
Revenue projections are paper.
So can we, can we just settle this part, okay? I understand that, you know, what you're saying, that, that you asked to participate, but was that to, to sit in, was that a, a department meeting kind of?
No, it's a financial team meetings.
Okay, but, but there's a difference between sitting in with Andy and his finance team and having a meeting that's set up specifically for the purpose of determining revenue with that finance team.
That's, that's a totally separate issue from what I'm looking at.
I, I know, but, but let's separate them out, okay? So one is the revenue thing. I personally liked the suggestion that the chair of Fincom, the chair of, you know, of this committee, of this board and, and the finance team to start off.
Or at least if the chair doesn't want to, a representative.
Exactly. Okay, so that, that's fine. So that takes care of the revenue projection and getting everybody on the same page.
Well, you need budget projections. You don't just need to know what your revenues are coming in.
I know, I know, but that's a different issue. Exactly. So, so there's revenue projection, okay? Then what I'm hearing you say is, what are our long-term, what's our long-term vision for, for the town in terms of finances and trying to increase revenues, et cetera, okay? Unfortunately, we can't just increase revenues.
Yeah.
But it, it really brings up something else. And that's kind of like, what's our vision for our community?
Exactly.
Okay? And how do we see our community prospering in the future? Okay?
We need a path that we can all, you know, a goal that we can all attain.
It sounds, it really sounds like what you're saying is, how can we get together and, for lack of a better way to describe it, how can we get together and really see where our thoughts are going in terms of what's the future for the community? Where do we want it to be five years from now, 10 years from now?
It almost sounds like master planning or, or strategic planning.
It's a little different than master plan, you know, 'cause that gets kind of specific, I think. This is, and I think that's, that's a really good idea. I really do. I think, you know, to get some visionaries in the town together and say, you know, how do we see our community growing and prospering, prospering in the future?
A little more detail than that. You know, you're bringing your department heads and I'm gonna pick on the idea since he's sitting here. What are the police needs, spending-wise, projected out over five years? Okay, how are we gonna meet those needs? What do we have? Are we gonna try and bring business in? Are we gonna ask for parcels to be rezoned? We need to have a realistic look at our town and what our ability to raise revenues are gonna be. We need to have a planned place to move forward. Now, there's been a lot of talk amongst residents about building up trails and marketing them. And that's how we'll, you know, but we need the plan to start down that path.
Isn't that the job of the finance committee?
You would think, but they've never, they said they were gonna work on it. It was over a year ago and they've never discussed it since, so.
Maybe, maybe we should talk to Cindy and see what, you know, what her plans are.
And I think we need some outside people thoughts, some of the residents. 'Cause, you know, a lot of them have great ideas on how they can move this town forward and they need a platform.
And that's what I mean by.
And we have the same people over and over. You're not infusing any new ideas.
It sounds like, it sounds like, I, I understand where, what you're thinking of, but that's, that's like a visioning session. It's a, it's a time for folks to get together and say, you know, when you moved here or, you know.
Well, the last time we did a budget sustainability committee was in, I'm gonna say 2007. I wish Andrea was in here. She'd probably remember. And they made a series of recommendations. The one we did before that, Paul Kinsel.
Such as?
I haven't read it in so long. I don't even recall. And the one we did before that, we did implement some of it. Paul Kinsel was on that one. I think it was 2002. So every few years, we do kind of put together, you know, a committee with a, a vision going forward.
I mean, from my perspective at this point, I don't think it's well-defined enough other than, you know, let's, I, I totally agree on the revenue side. Let's make sure we're all on the same page and, and let's make that a little bit more formal, okay? But, but I think we need to put some clarity around what are we talking about here before I would be willing to say, yeah, we need another.
Sure, we could definitely sit down. What I'd like to do is pull what the other communities' sustainability committees did, like Tingsborough, and do some research and see. 'Cause you want this charge to be specific. The board of selectmen oversees so many different areas. Fincom sees a lot of different areas. You'd want this committee to have a specific charge so that they could kind of focus, focus their attention.
I have a book I wanna give you.
Whether it's, whether it's on just our path forward, how we're gonna increase our revenue to, to meet our spending.
I, I think is a bigger question. Can we increase?
Can we?
Can we increase our revenue? Is that possible? I mean, two and a half, it, it limits us, but at this point, I look at it and I say, hmm, if it hadn't been for a couple of situations where we were the recipients of a wonderful benefactor.
Exactly.
We would be in, in the same straits as a lot of the communities around us. I mean, we have been so lucky. But on the other hand, I, I look at it and I say, well, I don't see anybody breaking down the boundaries to come in here and put in a business. And you're not going to get big revenues from, you know, a mom and pop operation. It doesn't happen. We don't have hotels coming in here. We don't have a casino coming in close enough, nearby, at all, whatever.
Well, that's the problem. That's why I want the committee to look at. As Townsend's rather unique, we're, we're a lot of water. We have a lot of conservation land and we're very far away from a highway system. So the ability for Townsend to attract any type of big, big business isn't real plausible. So that's why we need to kind of think outside the box and look, look at the different.
Would you do, would you do something for me? Can we just kind of table this part of it?
Sure. Yeah, I'd like to do more research on what other towns do.
And I also have a book I'm gonna give you, okay? I think you're gonna like it. I, I really do. I think you're gonna like it.
Is it a government makeover? I already have it.
No, it's not.
But, but, but it's, it's kind of how do you build a vision, but. I want the committee to do that.
Well, see, that's the other thing. I mean, I can't even get enough people. How many people do we have for the, for the charter committee?
I think.
Do we have enough yet?
I think it depends on, on what the subject is too. You know, when you're talking about your, your community like that, I've heard a lot of people that would like to participate in that. People wanna look at a charter? Not so much. You know, it's, it's what interests people.
Sue, when we have this conversation, Carolyn, I think that it would be a good idea for it to invite the Fincom.
Absolutely. I said I wanted that.
To be here, so that we can have kind of a, a joint meeting on this matter. I mean, it doesn't have to be a separate meeting. We could have it within one of our regular meetings, but I think that it's really important for them.
At this point, I just don't think it's defined well enough. It's not, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't have.
Everyone's input would help because it's not just my committee. It's, you know what I mean?
No, I, I understand, but it sounds like you have a, an idea of what you want it to be, but it really needs a little bit more meat on it.
And I'm sure it'll evolve once the committee gets going, you know what I mean? If we wanna give it a specific charge, that's fine.
What I'm concerned with is that it overlap, that it not overlap with the existing committees.
Well, I agree, Sue, except we're not getting any information out of the existing committees or a vision forward or a plan forward. So we kind of need a committee that's able to focus on a specific thing.
Be careful because that's, that's harsh criticism for the folks that are working hard.
Oh, it's not vintage criticism.
I know, but I don't want them to take it that way.
Please don't take it that way. I'm saying they're so busy and other things, they don't have time to focus on that.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's table it for now.
Okay.
But I, you know, I hear where you're going. I hear what your concerns are. Maybe you could start, we can start putting some meat on it or, or whatever, if there's folks out there.
I can do some research into the other communities too. Tingsborough was, did a really good one.
Okay. We have no appointments of personnel officials.
We have one addition to.
3.7.
Yeah, 3.7.
I'm telling you, I didn't get a revised.
My revised one doesn't have three. It has it up at the top, but it's not down here.
My, my bet on that one. I didn't put it down below.
Your bet?
In your, in your package, there's, in the, in the information that I gave you tonight, there is a, an item from H.P. Fairfield. This is the, the sweeper contract.
Oh, yeah.
This is the other piece. We approved the lease agreement several months ago. This is the, the approval of the, of the purchase, the remainder of the purchase price. If you recall, we did a, essentially a lease to own, the lease acted as, $25,000 lease payment acted as a down payment that's being applied to the, to the total cost of the unit. So just looking for the board's vote on this.
So I'm sorry, we're just voting to approve it. That's all you've eaten in your motion?
Yes, to approve the purchase of the sweeper.
And this is just off the state bid list? There's no procurement?
Correct.
All right, so I would move to approve the purchase of the VT 650 vacuum sweeper. And do I, you need the price in it?
Uh, yes.
For the total amount of $215,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We are going to our goals work session. Everybody submitted goals or lists, if you will, all four of us, four meaning the three of us and Andy. And Andy and I talked a little bit about how are we gonna do this thing?
We're gonna write them on a whiteboard?
Well, not quite. Have you ever, I'm assuming you've all done brainstorming?
Mm-hmm.
Have you, have you ever done affinity diagrams?
I've read about them. I've never participated in them.
Pardon me?
I think we, we can't see that far.
How do you wanna, how do you wanna do this?
How about a dart?
I was gonna just put it on the chairs, but.
Okay. It'll work.
I need my glasses.
And the folks at home aren't gonna, certainly aren't gonna be able to read it.
For the state?
Yeah.
I'll stand here.
Are you?
Anyway, gather round.
Sue, before we begin this.
Yeah.
Fun-filled activity.
Yeah.
If we cannot get through all these this evening.
First, we have to explain how this all works, okay? We brainstormed. And by, by that, I mean, the rules of brainstorming are, you just sit there and you write down all the things you can think of. And you don't talk about it. You just write them all down. That's what we did.
Like mental nausea.
Kind of, yes. And, and in some cases, well. Kind of, yes. And, and in some cases, what people do is, is actually take turns going around the table until nobody has anything else to say, okay? But we did that by writing everything down each individually. And we haven't discussed those things, other than once in a while, a couple of little things keep coming up, okay? So, what Andy and Karen did, or it looks like Karen did, no, Andy did.
My computer died today, so I had time to write down all that.
It saved us a little bit of time. And instead of each one of us putting those down on a post-it note and what our, our ideas were, he, he took them all and did that for us, okay? Now, the second part, the second thing that you do then is, we look at this and we start to say, are there natural groupings? Are there things that Sue said, for example, that are up there, that are similar to what Carolyn or Colin said? So, this is the, the place where we start saying, what lines up with each other, okay? And, and then when we get everything kinda grouped together, and you could run into a situation as well where there's, there's something up there that says, oh, IT is a good example. One of them that I had was IT, okay?
I had it as well.
And, and you had it as well. But when you think about what did, what did we mean by that, one of the things that I put down was IT in terms of security for the, for the town, okay? I think Colin had computer upgrades or, or something like that.
Just upgrading to a unified system.
Okay, so, they aren't necessarily the same thing.
Not at all, yeah.
Okay, so, in situations where you have that, you would maybe have two different groupings, or those things belong in two places. And it's okay to create a second post-it note so that it belongs under a different heading. For example, one is IT infrastructure. The other one might be townwide security, okay?
Even though they're MIS, they'd be in two, two groupings.
You'd have it in both places. And that's just an example that, that I can think of off the top of my head, okay?
So, let's move to prioritization.
Not prioritization yet, okay? First is grouping.
Okay.
First is groupings. And we're not allowed to talk to each other when we do this.
All right, wait a minute.
No, we're not allowed to talk to each other, okay? That's one of the rules. And the reason that it's one of the rules is because you wanna look at things and think about them in terms of how do they logically go together from where you're coming from? Because you may think of something entirely different than I would think of in terms of a relationship or how, you know, what that means to you. But you never know until you try.
So, are we each gonna group them as we see fit, or how is this gonna work?
Okay.
I've never done this exercise before.
You've never done this exercise?
I don't do much exercise at all.
What's this say, Andy?
That's the other issue. I can't read it.
Exercise program through Maya. So, we start with exercise program. And an exercise program.
Okay. Bylaw review committee, safety committee, driver training, right-to-know information. The one thing that we can do is ask for clarification of what some of these mean. So, if it says right-to-know information, what does that mean?
That means for employees that are potentially exposed to hazardous or dangerous conditions.
Okay, so that's.
Could be chemicals.
Safety.
Safety.
Okay, so I've already, in a way, that's what that category is. It's employee, employee safety or training, okay? That automatically goes into a grouping like that.
And that's already been grouped on the goals. So, if you look, established safety committee required by insurance carrier, review and update right-to-know information, advise selectmen of needed policies, implement driver training schedule to reduce costs. So, you have all four of those under.
Right, but we might have more there that would go under that same grouping, okay? So, here's the safety committee thing that goes with that.
We should have this every week.
Is that what your exercise program thing is too?
That would be part of the wellness personnel.
It's wellness.
Yeah.
Ooh, that's a cool one. We're not supposed to talk about it. Okay, we've got.
I knew we were playing games.
It's not, it, it really is a good exercise. And the reason it's a good exercise, let me explain to you what the goal is, okay? The goal of this exercise is that we objectively have all of our, our ideas out there, okay? We didn't talk about them. We didn't argue about them, more importantly, okay?
Is that the next step?
No. What you want to do is then say, how do these logically group together? Like, somebody else wrote them, okay? How do they logically group together? And once they do, then you say, all right, what would we call this particular group? Well, we already talked about that one. That's a good example. It's employee safety, okay? So, that's the heading for that. Yes? Oh, I thought you were asking a question.
I'm scratching my head.
You're scratching your head. Same thing, right? And, once we have all of the categories named, then we look at them compared to each other. And we say, as a board, if we have to pick from these things, we're not picking all of these individual things. We're picking from those categories. And these are the categories that are important to us. And that's where prioritization comes in. Which of those categories do we see as the most important ones that we should work on first? Is this making sense? Willing to try?
I'm willing to try anything once.
Oh, right.
I'm interested. I'm, I'm finding it interesting.
Come on up here. You can play with us.
Put them on the windows, or how do you wanna, kind of a absence of space.
I was, I was actually thinking right behind us there, but.
Is that where you could see them?
Why don't you hand the first group over and I'll start putting them?
Okay, we have sustainability, okay? So, just put that out there, okay? We have business development committee.
That would go with that.
You think that goes with that? That kinda groups the same?
Financial policies.
Financial policies. Who wrote financial policy?
I think both of us.
Yeah, several of us.
Okay. When you wrote financial policy, what was your definition?
My thought was to, to update all of the existing, all we have now are finance committee policies. We don't have townwide financial policies.
Okay.
And they really need to be townwide, embraced by everybody.
Okay, was that your thought too?
Yeah, we need comprehensive policies for the entire town.
So, is this its own grouping?
I think so. I think it might be, but I don't know what else is there.
Or, might it be grouped with policies?
It could be either part of a policy one or part of a finance one.
Because you also have personnel policies here, okay?
See, I would group them as policies.
ADA policies. Well, in terms of a goal, it might work.
It might work, yeah.
Do you wanna try it?
And it may be, those may be some that are in multiple groups. So, the financial policies could be in the policy group, but it could be in the.
Oh, look at this. Board of Selectment policy manual.
I see a lot of things that are policies.
Policy, policy.
Since I'm a big, only board member, I can see that from.
Okay. Asset management, inventory, valves, age, maintenance schedule, life expectancy.
Add you.
Huh?
Values, not valves.
V.A.O.B.E.S. Val.
I'm sorry, what is that?
I'm getting in touch with my Greek.
Okay.
So, what is that?
Asset management, inventory, values, age, maintenance schedule, life expectancy. We also have charter committee. I think those go with the other.
We actually have a capital asset policy that was developed by the county and we have those schedules.
That goes along with my townwide maintenance plan idea.
Townwide maintenance.
That's one of the ones that I put.
Does that relate to charter? Uh, not to charter, to, what was the other one that you had up there? Had another one? Oh, here you go. Capital planning.
I would put charter committee under here, committee works here.
Capital planning, asset management.
It's kinda separate. That's an accounting thing. Bear with you. You have a plan?
Can you make, no, can you make another one of these? Because I hear what you're saying, but I think it also belongs under here. So, you, you're saying it belongs.
Another capital or another asset?
Another finance policies.
Do we have one for?
But here's your intent.
Sue, another capital or another asset?
Another asset, please.
Uh, mine's the one up on the wall.
Your, yeah, but wasn't that yours for the maintenance schedule? What's the?
No, my, I have a, mine is separate. Is that yours, Andy?
Whose is that?
It might be mine.
I think it's Sue's.
Okay.
What's your intent then, Sue? My intent is that that become a tool for capital planning as well. Okay, that's why I'm saying.
Oh, then, then that's fine. Cause I just didn't realize what it was that outlined.
That, that, yes, it exists today, but I think it needs to exist for capital planning too. That's just my opinion.
Mine's slightly different.
So, one of them, you have a finance one over there?
For the whole town.
Do you have a finance one over there?
No, yeah.
Really?
Those are committees. So, this would fall under.
So, one of them's going, one of them's going under capital planning and one of them's going in a little, by itself. Annual performance evaluations.
It's not under.
Department head.
Personnel.
Yeah, where your wellness and your exercise could go.
Do you wanna put it over there? Well, we kinda called that, we were thinking safety, but it's employee stuff, right? So, so that's just employee stuff. Bylaw review committee.
That's under your charter.
Charter committee.
That's under.
Where'd you put charter?
I didn't.
Is it still on your hands?
I think we put it all into committees and we were talking about putting it under committees.
Okay. Or, it seems like a logical grouping to you?
Yeah, cause the bylaw review committee.
Heart library and annex.
Heart library and annex.
Separate?
Separate.
Facilities?
Yeah, they're requirements.
Sue, I think these two should be their own category.
Cause they're actually requirements. It's not a goal.
This is more fin, this is more financial.
Don't, don't try to, just say, do you see a similarity? If you don't, then start another line. We don't wanna talk about it too much, other than for clarification. Okay, Department of Revenue, budget review. What do we mean by that? Is that just under finance? In general?
Department of Revenue.
That would be under here on my.
Oh, consultation, review of budget process, the Board of Selectment, FinCom.
Oh, I think that would be here.
Not a committee.
Is it policy?
No, but it's not. This is just the same grouping.
Policy. Well, it's just a review.
Yeah, it's, it's kinda like what's your process, what's your policy. So, this sounds like.
There you go.
Sounds good to me. I'll go with that.
Okay, established personnel grievance board for non-union employees. Okay, up here. Employee stuff. Townwide maintenance plan.
There you go. But that's not, that's different.
That's not, it's different from what you.
We have this whole zone row.
Mine's phys, mine is one plan of the maintenance schedule for the entire, all vehicles, all buildings, for the entire town.
Yeah, I think it's its own team.
Okay. Exercise program.
That's personnel.
See, look at how you're doing this. Retiree health insurance.
I'd say personnel. I don't want its own column.
No, that's personnel.
Computer upgrades.
Nah, it would probably go under maybe capital planning or.
New group. Or do you wanna also put this under capital?
No, I think it's silky.
Capital's good enough to go.
Carolyn, you're thinking about it. You're not supposed to be thinking.
Oh, I'm in the wrong place then.
Driver training. Here?
Or safety committee.
Well, this is where you have safety stuff.
All right.
It's employee stuff, right? Health insurance, active employee retiree, somebody else said that, so it's really kinda the same. And when you find out that they're the same, you kinda put them together, okay? Means more than one person had the same thought. Training for managers. Wow, we've got all kinds of training stuff here, huh? Transparency and compliance with laws, open meeting law ethics, personnel policies, if that, do you remember? Was that mine? Because if it was, I was thinking of it in terms of.
It's not mine either.
I was thinking of it in terms of helping, helping employees, okay? Debt management plan, sounds like one of your finance things over there, right? Okay. We've got two that I think go together. Heart library and annex. West Townsend reading room ramp, window siding.
I thought that was all taken care of.
Anyway. Buildings, just for now, they're, they're buildings, okay? Quarterly employee meeting. This? Efficiency, staff education, gas consumption policy, electric hybrid vehicles, fire department, water department.
That's to meet an existing goal that already is, so I don't know if that should have its own row.
Were you thinking energy?
Yeah, that's for the energy.
Okay. But it kinda relates to policy anyway, but. Biannual all-board meetings. Saturday morning.
I would put that under.
I'm going to Florida.
Policies. I would put that under policies if I were.
Which one?
I would put it, I would put it here, but if you wanna put it.
Under charter and bylaw review?
What are you, what are you trying to put? This one?
No, the one on your hands.
No, that one.
I suppose you're right.
Yeah, my intent was to create a policy for better communication, not an official.
So, you don't just mean policy, you mean process?
Yeah.
Okay.
Policy process, well.
Did you guys talk about info technology?
Info.
Under computer upgrades.
Oh, yes.
This. This is progress. Regionalize consolidation, regionalization, collaboration, internal, external. Regionalization, regionalized water department with Groton and Lumenberg.
Uh, maybe efficiency?
I don't even know what that would. Oh, that would go under, didn't I just, we do another one, Department of Revenue? Both of them are consultation to the Department of Revenue. It could be in one group.
Well, you said that this was more processes thing.
Yeah, that's where we put it, but that's a consultation with DLR.
Okay. Who did regionalization, consolidation, collaboration, internal, external?
Me.
What did you mean by that?
Looking at efficiencies, different ways to, to save, save funds or, or improve service.
Okay, so then these, that makes sense?
Yeah.
What else we got? Well, we're not short of ideas, are we? Monthly department head meeting, sounds like it goes there.
I have to say, Dana, you're doing an excellent job.
This is, this is kind of one of my old jobs, actually. So, don't think it's something new. Monthly reports for departments, that kind of sounds like policy stuff, procedure.
Procedure, process.
Wow, we're actually getting a little hitting for that, aren't we? Can you read that?
I wrote it. Meet goal to reduce energy use by 20%.
Okay, so that goes over with this one then, right?
Yeah.
Here's another policy for you.
You guys could come up and grab now, you know. You getting the hang of this?
Yeah.
You getting the hang of? Come on, I'm not gonna do all the work.
I would say this is employee.
Oh. Boarding committee handbook, employee handbook.
Employee.
Do you wanna put them all under employee?
I would say. I don't know.
Insurance manual.
Your guess is as good as mine. Insurance manual.
Finalize.
Insurance manual, is that procedure?
Is that me?
Policy?
It's not me.
I think it was yours.
It was just to update the, the policies that are existing. I put it under employee.
Can we get rid of this one?
Do you?
We talked about this.
Finalized treasurer. I put it under employee.
I mean, but we've really already.
Training.
Discuss this.
Issue RFP for Route 119 sidewalk.
Stepping work.
Assets or, with the buildings, heart library.
Yeah, let's just put it with the buildings for now, cause it's like a big thing that needs to get done, right?
Come on. Carolyn, come on.
Transparency.
I was the bad kid and classed it in the back.
Is this one yours?
No.
Transparency, good conduct, responsibility. Is that under policy?
I would say, yeah, under, under policy.
Incorporate new employees and officials into the orientation process.
What's that one?
Um, internet.
Did you have a different idea?
We don't.
No, I think maybe we look at this again, it's kind of broad.
Yeah.
Budget production, I'm gonna put that with sustain, sustainability and FinCom and debt management.
I knew you'd be able to do this.
You guys are doing great job.
Delinquent tax collections and tax title, that sounds like a this one.
It's over, I would say that's over with this.
Revenue, finance stuff. Citizen participation, that deserves its own.
Can we put it on the flag?
No.
Patriotic.
Defaming the flag.
Balanced budgets, Carolyn.
Treasure collector staffing.
This is the same one.
If it's a staffing thing, where do you think that should go?
Balanced budgets, that should be in there.
Staffing, for now, up there with employee stuff. Address audit material weakness.
I'd say that would go back.
Finance.
These are the two, these are two computer ones.
Improve info delivery, whose was that? I'm not sure.
Me, getting information out to the public.
That links up, is mine, where's mine, the, um, about, uh, like a newsletter or something, that kinda goes along with that.
Was that that info thing that we saw up there?
One of mine was to do like monthly.
Information memos?
Yeah, either memo or newsletter from the board of selectmen.
Well, you're reporting from departments?
No, it's, it's from.
Did you forget one?
Did you forget one?
No, I didn't.
He might not have liked it, maybe. Anyways, it goes along with, that's basically the idea that I had. It's just do a.
So, it's, it's roughly anything having to do with communication, right?
It's, well.
Oh, information, uh, quarterly and monthly.
Yes, that's my, that goes with that, that's what I mean.
So.
So, that was more directed to the public rather than to employees?
Well, I mean, yeah.
Okay.
Alternative communication methods, we'll probably go with that too.
I would say that would go along with the.
Expand.
Well, you can do it in both, you could do it in capital planning or the budget.
Can we get another one? Can we get another one? Funding for capital investments, and, and what was meant by that anyway?
Alternative communication.
I think that was yours, Andy.
Um, yeah, basically to, uh.
But for new funding or?
Well, to try to sort of institutionalize it, so that it's not the first thing that gets cut every year.
Okay.
To make it.
Establish.
Yeah, establish it as a routine thing.
This one is expand use of technology to improve citizen access. I'm gonna put that with participation.
What is that one?
Expand use of technology to improve citizen access to local government, doesn't that go with citizen participation?
Makes sense to me. Oh, good!
Okay, move to adjourn, just kidding.
Funding for capital spending investment, um, I was thinking about.
All it means to be here.
Right? Look at what we've done! Now what? Now we need headings for them, but can you guys come up here and just look at this list, because it looks pretty long? And I want to make sure that there isn't a logical.
Well, what I would do is.
Way to break that out?
I would do is separate it into two categories, things that just need to be updated and continued, that are already in place.
I'm getting a dry, Andy's getting a dry erase marker.
Okay, can you guys work on splitting those up?
What, things that are already in place?
Does that make sense to you? Colin?
What?
Carolyn?
What's the two?
Well, we have things that are already in place, that just need to be improved upon or reinstated, and then we have actual goals, things that have never existed before. So, do you want to group them in those two different firsts?
Okay, so new stuff, new stuff versus.
So, we have annual performance. Old stuff that just needs to be like.
All right, why don't you?
Okay, so just make, make two lines here.
Well, this program would be new.
New headings on there, Colin?
What's that? I'm gonna make, just write the major category.
Okay, well, let's make sure that we got them organized, which is what Carolyn's doing.
This would be new, this would be existing.
So, you're saying.
This would be existing.
Existing but revised, revision necessary or something.
Yeah, training for manager would really be new, we haven't had a training program implemented for managers in many years. Um, health insurance would definitely be new, health insurance would be new. Transparency and compliance, well, that's more of a goal, so I'd stick it under new, versus old.
Yeah, yeah.
Incorporate new employees, so you kinda want to do a whole new orientation process with this goal?
Well, it's not just like a handbook, it's, it's.
An, an orientation process.
Bringing them into the home.
So, that would be new, I would say new.
This kind of exists already.
It does, then we can put it over.
Because everybody has to go through ethics training and all of that stuff, it's kind of reviewed for that.
Okay, this is existing. This is existing, so this is new, this is existing. Treasure tax collector, this would be new, really. Okay, we got two of them. Insurance manual is old.
She's getting right into this.
Um, this is actually old, but we haven't had it so long, I'm gonna stick it under new.
Okay.
Employee handbook needs to be updated. Or actually, we don't have an employee handbook, we really have personnel policy, so we'll stick this under new. Monthly department head meetings is old, we just need to. This is old, it just needs to be updated.
And you're getting way too high in the. For some of us.
Boarding committee handbook is new, so this is existing, needing improvements or whatever, this is new.
Employee related things, okay, so we have some.
Yeah.
This is a work session.
So, it's a. Review and revise existing.
Yeah.
Policies, procedures.
That'll be fine. Please don't.
We should build the agenda this way.
Can we just do two bullets, because they really are different?
No, 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 you didn't want to erase it all and dirty up your hand?
Well, can I ask this question?
Yeah.
Should we honestly set what we feel is a priority to work on, as far as the different headings that we have here? Cause otherwise, you know, we're gonna be looking at every single one of them, or maybe do a different heading at each meeting.
Well, let's see how this grouping thing comes out. Okay. We need names for every group.
All right.
So, you just made two groups there. So, employee related existing and employee related, um.
New.
New.
Goal.
New. New development, how's that?
New development and new initiative.
Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, really, you know, this is fun when there are more people involved.
I've done some of this before, but I haven't done this in a long time, so it's kind of a different thing, so it's, uh. I thought Carolyn, you did a great job there, uh, putting those together for the, uh, it was like, cause, like, zapping through those like crazies.
Yeah, but I mean, if you start thinking that way, do you know what I mean, in terms of categories?
Yeah.
It kinda.
You've been with us many, many years, so you, you know maybe what we could improve on.
Okay, so. Carolyn, since he's got the job of, of hiring that he took on, do you, do you want to come over here and, what were we gonna call this? Financial related or?
Just something with general. Funding for capital investments, addressed audit material weaknesses, balanced budget, investigate new revenue sources, explore budget. Things with departments and policies.
So, how about, how about like a general category, like financial oversight?
Financial sustainability.
You could call it that.
Yeah, something like that.
Financial sustainability, can you spell that?
I can't. S-U-S-T-A-I-N-A-D-I-O.
Yeah, she's looking here. I can't read.
No points off, it's coming.
Where's my spell check?
I know that's not a bylaw, but it's really, um.
Well, the charter committee is required in our charter, and the bylaw review committee is required in our charter, so these are things that we must comply with.
Okay, so, um, how about mandatory law review?
Legal requirements or, or.
Legal review.
Legal reviews, how's that?
Or legal, basically a little.
Step we have no choice on.
It's a.
Think about it.
Yeah, there's. You know, you're not breaking the law if you don't.
No, but that's okay, we're still obligated, legal obligations.
Yeah, obligation, obligation.
Isn't it, isn't it every 10 years where we're required to review the charter?
This is like charades.
Yeah.
And then every five years, we're required to review the bottom.
So, it's legal obligation.
So, obligations or something like that.
Legal obligations.
Asset management, and that's really, I, I really think it belongs.
I spelled it right.
Uh, in finance stuff.
Yeah.
That's fine.
See, this, this.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, we can talk about it when it comes up, yeah, I'm talking about it.
Just so we don't do this at all, that's all. But I think it's, it is finance related, because it, it's a tool to allow you to do some of that stuff.
Now, Colin thought the townwide maintenance plan should be its own, and I kinda, I kinda agree, unless you want to group it under buildings, but you're also including vehicles, right?
Yeah, but it does, it might, let's put it with the buildings.
Yeah, cause you're talking maintenance of, of buildings, not equipment, right?
And equipment.
Well, you know, he wanted a maintenance plan on vehicles.
So that we have a, we have a plan for the whole town.
But that's very similar to this, this is asset management, okay? It's, yeah.
All right, one less category, excellent.
Um, okay, wow, we get quite a few that I think are related to policies and procedures. Right? Isn't this fun?
This is capital planning.
Huh?
Yeah, oops.
But you could also put this under.
Just kidding, just kidding.
Yeah, but I'm thinking of this as a tool to help them, so it really is kinda more like that, do you know what I mean? Okay.
Well, then I could, I could even see putting funding for capital under the finance.
Yeah.
All right.
Either way.
Hey, less categories, it makes me happy.
Do you want to put all of this?
I would put it under finance.
All of this under finance?
Capital's in.
They're God's or Post-it notes.
We got plenty of dry erase, Andy, you won't run out.
Good.
Now, the IT thing, I think, should stay in its own category, but it could be subcategorized under finance.
Well. Everything relates to finance in a way.
Or facilities or.
Or facilities.
Well.
Or sustainability.
But I have no problem with it staying in its own group.
I, just for now.
IT.
For now, I.
IT?
IT, yeah.
These are. Well, I would say, look, you could classify it down to finance, creative finances, but looking at regionalization of.
Visionary finance?
Sustainability?
Yeah.
We already had that, no, we didn't have that in category, okay.
No, I, well, yeah, I put financials to sustainability.
So, this.
Well, that, that answers that question, like you were talking about before. If, if one of the, uh, solutions to the concern of sustainability is to regionalize, right?
Well, these I think are pretty specific, but did you want, um, the DOR to look at what we could regionalize, or these are your own ideas, what was your intent in?
These would be opportunities that arise, or opportunities that we come up with.
So, that out the window.
Yeah, not looking for DOR.
Okay. It's along the same thing, no, regionalization, how about thinking of it as a box?
Yeah, just call it regionalization possibilities, how's that? What's another word for possibilities?
Opportunities?
Yes.
Exploration.
Regionalization opportunities.
And exploration. So, these are buildings, it's pretty easy.
Do you have buildings up there?
Except the RFP and getting the 119 sidewalk thing, that's not really physical.
Infrastructure?
They don't have one of those.
Let's put it over here, okay?
It's its own goal.
Because. However. But, just for now, and then we'll come back to it, what else have we got?
However, if you look under buildings, right, West Townsend reading room, this is also an RFP, so this could be bidding process or, or bids to be accomplished. The funding's there, it just hasn't been done, needs to send out a bid.
Okay, so outstanding, um. Or pending.
Projects.
Pending projects.
What about something like public facilities and then you roll in?
There's no real goal except this.
So, that's why I put it here, cause it's not a goal in itself, it's a task.
It's accomplishment, how about we put accomplishments?
It's really a task, okay? And, and I think sometimes when you do brainstorming for goals.
Yes, then I put this under task.
Okay, so that's really a task, so.
Can we have a, so task?
And I would say this is a task.
Yes, this is outstanding tasks, okay? Cause that's really what they are, they're, they're things that we haven't finished yet, that need to be done.
Yeah, that's why I put on my goals improvement, you know, it's not really a goal.
Right, what else we got?
Well, we put this in both places, but this is to brainstorm on citizen participation.
Okay, so citizen participation, and can we take the citizen communication and put it together?
Is it citizen or resident?
This was IT, Andy.
Same thing.
And that was tasks.
It has a Z in it.
Where's the other one that we had? The communication thing, Colin, that you talked about before? You know, communicating with the public?
It's right there.
Yeah, I think it's.
No, it's right there.
Oh, he was, that's right, he was talking about citizens, not employees.
Okay, so.
I mean, employees too would get that, but.
This is really.
But it's mostly for residents.
I'd say you could have the maintenance, cause you're talking about communication and information, and it's not attorney, so.
Okay. Okay.
So, is it communications or is it citizen participation or engagement?
Or is it, is it transparency?
All vehicle.
Let's just put citizen communication.
Okay.
Outreach.
There we go.
Ooh, I like that.
Supposed to be non-judgmental about this, but I can get a compliment. And what's this? That is our 20% reduction penalty goal that's already existing, that could go under tasks.
Cool. Okay.
From 60 Post-its down to eight categories.
But, but you see, that's the beauty of doing that.
No, I, I, I think this is a, this is a good exercise.
Okay, so, let's sit back down and see what we think here. Okay? So, we have employee stuff, some new things, some existing stuff. We have general heading of financial sustainability. We have general heading of financial sustainability, legal obligations, policies and procedures, IT-related stuff, regionalization opportunities, and that's really like investigating those.
See, even the tall goo needs a chair, not yet.
So we have a list of outstanding tasks and citizen outreach. So if we, if we look at these, what we really should do is kind of vote on what we think.
Priorities.
Are the priorities, so where's the little?
It's in front of you.
Are these dry erase?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so.
Why don't you put it in a different color?
So, I'll do that. So this is one, this is two, okay, because they really are different. I mean, their, their heading is employee, but, you know, to develop new stuff is a lot different than to.
Update existing.
Update and revise or re-institute or whatever. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So, wanna try voting?
Sure.
Do you want to think about it and write it down, and then we'll post it there, or?
Well, I have a tie.
Do you have a tie for the top one?
Top two.
Top two.
Employee-related and financial stability, is it gonna be tough for me to decide which is, is more important?
All right, so there are nine things here, one way that you can prioritize is by giving it a value. You know, like, um, you can give it the highest value, which would be a nine, okay? Then the next one would get an eight. Do you wanna try that?
Yeah, that's fine.
So you wanna start at the top, Sue? Sure. So, do you, do you want a couple minutes?
No, I don't, do you call?
And Andy gets a vote too, 'cause Andy participated in the goals. So how do you wanna, do you want me to just write down, what's your number nine, what's your biggest?
You know, I think, when thinking about it, um, I'd say number nine is financial because that dictates everything, including the employee-related things.
Okay, so we have one nine.
My nine is employee-related.
New or existing?
New.
What's your nine?
IT.
Hmm, it's up to me there. Are they gonna put me in jail because we haven't done these?
There's no, there's no fighting.
But do you know what I'm saying, if we have legal obligations, we should be.
No, I get that.
Meeting those, so, so to me, it, it's a toss-up between these two, but I'm, I'm gonna say nine here, okay? Because they're, they're not the fun things, but they're the things that need to happen nonetheless, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna give that one a nine. Okay, Carolyn, what's your eight?
I have to say employee-related, um, existing, kind of build our platform up before we bring in new stuff.
Colin?
Mine would be policies and procedures.
And this includes board of selectmen policies and stuff, right?
Financial stability.
Sustainability, this one?
Yes.
And I'm going to probably say that one too. Okay.
Actually, I changed my mind, I'm gonna put my eight on number three.
Okay. Seven.
Would be number seven for me.
But, I mean, you can do the ones that we have up here too.
Yeah, okay, yeah, all right.
Five.
I'm gonna get confused because it's five, but I'm writing it seven.
Policies and procedures, employees.
Yeah, I think I gotta do that one too. 'Cause I, I don't, my feeling is that we haven't done enough of that.
You too, that would be number, number six.
Okay.
Colin?
Number one.
Andy?
Uh, same, number one.
I'm gonna do that.
Six, 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 interesting.
Yeah.
Which one did you do?
Uh, one.
That's creepy, actually. We changed it both.
Okay, I will.
I was only kidding.
Five.
Close enough to two.
Scary little one.
Not superstitious or anything.
No, no.
Um, IT would be my five.
Colin?
Five is outstanding tasks. Down the bottom, second from the bottom.
My five is IT.
Mine is existing, that is number one, employee-related, existing.
Okay, four.
So my four would be citizen outreach.
That's a shame, isn't it?
Yeah.
I agree.
There's so many important things, four.
Yeah, me too.
Our citizen outreach is gonna end up being, um. Wow, I, I gotta give the outstanding tasks something there.
That's my three, that's yours three.
Mine's legal obligations.
You're not worried about them coming after you, huh?
Take your birthday, right?
Yeah.
Three, Andy?
Oh, um. Regionalization.
Seven.
I do one?
No, uh, yeah, you just did one. Oh, wait, did you?
No, that was Andy's.
No, that was Andy's.
Three's out of there, one, two, three, hmm. No.
No, you voted twice on that, yeah, you already did that one.
I already did that one. Can't remember which one I didn't do.
You have, you haven't done one, seven or nine. My two is.
Seven.
My two is legal, actually, my two is new development, I'm sorry, employee-related.
Carolyn on two.
My two is the regionalization.
Employee new.
And the last three is legal, number one.
Karen, what haven't I done yet?
What did you do last?
I just did, um.
Um. Hmm?
Did you put your two in yet?
I don't know, one.
Yeah, you put your two on, on new or, um.
Yeah.
New building.
No, no, that was Carolyn.
Yeah.
Well, I had a two there also.
Two for citizen outreach.
Citizen outreach for me?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so Colin, you only have.
I did regionalization for two.
IT is one, is one that you don't have.
Okay.
My one was outstanding tasks.
Thank you.
Second from the bottom.
And Sue, your last one would be legal obligations.
No, I already did that one, which one did I do, Carolyn?
Then one of us voted twice in all the categories.
Uh, let's see, one. Existing but revised employee related.
Uh, no.
No?
Because I, there's four numbers up there.
Uh-huh, then you must have done that for number five, then yours must be IT.
No, I did IT.
Maybe.
You originally put it.
I had legal on as number six for me.
Okay.
All right.
Are we good?
Yeah, we've got number, we've got four next to every one of them.
Good enough for government work.
Okay, so.
So then you tally them?
Yes, please. I'm not doing it.
14, 20, 25 for number one.
And it's a different color.
You do it then.
19 for number two.
Wait a second.
Oh, I can't see that.
33 for number three. 19 for number four. 27 for number five. 20 for number six. 15 for seven. 13 for eight. And 14.
The number is financial sustainability.
33.
Well, we know what to work on next, lady one.
Number one. Policies and procedures is number two. Revise existing employee stuff is number three. IT is number. Isn't this something?
Took away.
I'm gonna tie them.
Huh, that's okay.
Poor citizens, always the last.
Well, at least they've got TV. Or YouTube. So.
At least they made our list.
So looking at this, having looked at all of the, the items that we collectively put up, how do you feel about that prioritization?
Feel good about it.
Yeah, I feel pretty good about it.
I do, Andy, how about you? Does it make sense?
Yeah, it does. You know, I think for most organizations, finances are, are number one. Everything sort of falls from, from there, so.
Now.
I'm surprised that policies and procedures are as highly ranked as they are, but.
Well, one of the reasons that I think that needs to happen is I was looking at what our obligations are as a board, and that is supposed to be one of our major roles and responsibilities. And, and I don't think that we've had the time or, you know, we, we haven't had the discipline because, you know, you're fighting fires and doing everyday stuff all the time. And it's not like it's a huge thing for us to go through, but I think, um, you know who does it well? The, the school committee, they have a revolving policy review.
Right.
And, um, and I think that we could do one policy a month or something like that.
I think it's important to have structure for, a pathway for when the call.
Yeah.
Eliminates confusion and arguments.
Yeah.
The benefit, of course, the benefit of the school committee is they've got nine.
Yeah, and they have a subcommittee that does it, but, but I'm, I'm, I'm suggesting for something like that, I would be willing to have a discussion.
Yeah.
Every other meeting on a policy until we got through them.
And I think some of them we're gonna look at and say.
No, no.
We don't need this.
Exactly.
You know, this was adopted in 1985.
But at least we can, at least we can say, you know, we looked at it and we talked about it and, uh, and we might find that, having gone through them, there might be some new ones that we should have.
Yeah.
So, uh, you brought, I think this was on your list, Andy, the, the handbooks and things for the committees and boards, would you wanna put that, maybe throw that under policies and procedures?
Well, I guess that's a, that's a consideration, one of the things I was gonna ask you, Sue, because you've got more experience in these affinity exercises, I think, than the rest of us do. Is it, is it okay to move stuff around after the fact?
That's what I meant by, well, that's what I meant by, as you, as you look at them, you may find that it not only belongs in one heading, but it really belongs in another one as well, and it's perfectly fine to put it into both of them, okay? So that as part, you know that the focus might be employees, but really you're saying we're doing this more from a policy perspective, and, and, um, and in that light, it may rise in terms of, of the importance. Okay, so if you feel like you wanna add that one to that, that, that's fine. Yeah? To do it, to make sure that the employee handbook and, you know, that stuff.
All the policies, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so what's next?
Well.
I was gonna make a suggestion.
It's obvious that we're not gonna get everything done, certainly not in a year, okay? My suggestion would be that we take the top three and, and start breaking those down into, um, what do those mean in terms of tasks that need to happen, okay? And I think when you look at some of the, the things that we listed in, in the brainstorming, some of those really are tasks, they're not so much the goal, these are the goals. You like that?
Yeah, I, I think though that there are cer, some things in other categories that we should pull out as well, just to discuss them.
Such as?
Such as the, what I brought up last meeting, retiree healthcare. 'Cause that's listed as tied as number five, but I still think it's important to talk about.
I could almost argue, I could argue that talking about employee, um, you know, retirement healthcare is, is also financial related, okay?
I was gonna bring that, I, I don't know why I didn't mention it.
Yeah, I would say that that, that's definitely something that.
'Cause you were gonna put it on the board, right?
Could fit under financial.
I wanted to.
'Cause you're thinking of it from a financial perspective.
Right, if we can afford it, it's just a conversation that we need to have.
Yes, I know, I know, I know, but it is, it's, it's financial in that sense.
It is very financial.
Yeah, so if we're all.
I just wanna, I.
If we're all agreed, we can make another post-it note for that one.
I don't mind moving that over to the finance wall.
Do you wanna just move it totally?
I, I mean, we want to.
She likes to see us two up there.
Yes, I think, Sue, you had it and I had it.
Here.
So I'll mark it off for this one.
Okay.
What's on there too, or just leave it?
I guess we could leave it there as well.
Yes, and then it's in two categories, yeah. Okay, so I think we've done a good job for tonight, maybe we'll come back, but let me digest it, you guys think about it too.
Should we meet next week?
Do you want me to write this up in some fashion?
I would just, I could do it. It would be nice if we had the list with the prioritization, with the votes and the prioritization.
What falls under each.
And then what falls under each one, okay?
Yep, we can do that.
And what was your question?
Do we wanna meet next week just to go over this?
If you'd like.
I don't leave town very much, so.
I just don't remember what is happening next week.
Are you free on Tuesday?
For you?
Go ahead, just try saying no, Andy. It could be a work session.
Yep, just a work session next week, what time? Carolyn?
Is your class?
No, it doesn't start till 3:00.
So, can we do six?
Sure. Okay with you, Andy?
Uh, yeah, I think so.
What's the date on that?
It'd be the 16th.
Okay. All right, what's next? Review and sign payroll and bills payable warrants.
I would move that we approve and sign the bills payable in the first one, our session.
Seconds.
Moved in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to adjourn at 9:33.
Second.
Moved in seconded to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.